1.78 is shade, tables, and seating at Artesia High School, Cerritos High School, Gar High School, and Whitney High School. Since this is upon Board Member Johnson's request, I'll call on Board Member Johnson.
We have seven comments.
Okay, thank you. We'll go ahead with the comments first then. Go ahead with the comments first.
We have seven comments, so should we ask the comments to be limited to three minutes? Can we have the seven people kind of move up to the front? The first speaker will be Michael Madschorn. Second person is Lori Yulberg.
I guess I wrote it a little too quick. It's Michael Harshorn. How are you doing, everybody? President Chen, Dr. Mary Su, and Board Members. I just wanted to talk about some really pressing needs at Artesia High School. Obviously, shade and seating would be fantastic, but it was mentioned earlier that we had a homecoming dance, and it was a wonderful dance. You would have liked to have seen the beautiful setup that was there, but you probably wouldn't want to stay there very long. And the reason why is because the gym has non-functioning fans. And so it was extremely hot in there, so hot that some students had to stand or sit by the door and have their entire body basking in fans. We had floor fans, basically, trying to circulate air through there. This Thursday, we're going to have our report card night. And I've been at Artesia High School for 11 years, and in those 11 years, we've always held it in the gym, but we can't this year. We're going to hold it in the quad. And the reason why is because there's not adequate ventilation in the gym. And we, of course, don't want teachers and parents and students needing to stand next to a fan all night long. At Artesia High School, we have uneven fields. Some fields are so uneven, we don't even feel comfortable using them in emergency evacuations. We got a track resurfaced a few years. It now needs to be repainted and resurfaced and modernized, I suppose you could say. One concern that a lot of the students have is at Artesia High School, there's a single restroom for each gender, and that's 1,500 students approximately. And they don't have very adequate access to restrooms. The one restroom we do have, there's drainage issues. And you could imagine what that would be like to go to a restroom with drainage issues. I wouldn't want to go there. We have outdated library that increasingly, year by year, is becoming more and more irrelevant. And it's not that libraries are irrelevant, it's that ours are relevant because there's no modernization being done to it. It's very, very much last century. Teachers in the past have always concerned that maybe we should have a drop-off area. Trying to park or trying to drop off your kid at Artesia High School in the morning is a dance with 4,000, 5,000-pound vehicles.
30 seconds.
And that's a dangerous dance, and it's surprising that more students don't get injured. And of course, last board meeting, we heard about the math department wanting one-to-one devices. I have one-to-one devices. I'm an English teacher. I guess I was the department that helped them out, I suppose, according to them. I've used those devices every single day except for the first day. I went over my syllabus the first day. Every single day since then, I've used those devices. Teachers want them, students want them. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Lori Yulberg and Ananta Marayanian is next up.
Good evening, Board. My name is Lori Yulberg. I'm a teacher over at Cerritos High School. I'm a parent of a former student. I'm a community member and homeowner, and I'm a product of ABC. We have a lot of needs at each of our schools. I don't want to belittle anything that any of the other parents have asked for or requested for. I believe all of our schools need shade, tables, benches, paint. I was in the district office, and I worked here when I was 14 years old through a program. There's carpet here that I think was here when I worked here. That was 40 years ago. We have a lot of needs in this district, and we have committees that the Board goes through and a process and to take items and put them on the agenda to go over them without them going through that process, I believe, is not right. I want to thank you.
Following Ananta is Celia Spitzer, former Board Member.
Good evening, Honorable School Board Member, President, Vice President, and other School Board Members. Last School Board meeting, thank you for extending the meeting until 11:30 and hearing our voices. I really appreciate that. This time, we didn't want to bring all the parents into the School Board, but so we have a couple of parent leaders representing some of the requests that we put forth on the other day. One thing is like, as I was going to my home at 11:30 that night, I was thinking about, you know, the opportunity that we had to voice our needs down here to the School Board and the Board Members listening to that. And I will tell you one thing, after I went home the next day and then a couple of days later, I had so many parents call me or meet me on the mall or wherever I go shopping, talking about how it was refreshing to see parents to come to the School Board and School Board listening to parents' needs. And they had a lot of requests, like these people told. I need shades, I need bathrooms, I need carpet, I need, you know, classrooms, divisions that are, you know, not proper, new projector. So I'm glad that the shade that I asked for here acted as a catalyst within the community so that all these people are coming here and asking so many things. I am so happy about that because that's what I want. That's what I want to see, that these people come here and ask many, many things. But having said that, I do think that shades is very important because it is a health and safety concern. We asked for shade. I asked for many things when I asked the Board in the first time when I came here. But after that, I picked out the shade for three reasons. One, it covers majority of the students because it's a need. If you want an athletic trainer or a band equipment, those are all very, very important needs, but it goes and reaches a subset of students, and they are to be catered off. But you can go for the low-hanging fruit. There is the need for the majority of the students. So I found that the shade is a good option, that it serves majority of the students. And then the Whitney's ask is because one Board Member said that there are need for elementary school, there are need for high schools, there is need for middle school. Whitney is a unique school because it is a middle school and a high school put together. When you give a shade to Whitney, you satisfy both the middle school student and the high school student. And then one Board Member was telling that, oh, what about other trustee areas?
30 seconds.
Whitney is unique because it has students from all trustee areas. So that's our request, and I hope the Board satisfies that request. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Celia Spitzer. And the following Celia Spitzer would be Arlene Riddick.
As a member of the Facilities Ad Hoc Board Advisory Committee, I request that the Board take no action this evening on this agenda item and allow the committee to do its job in evaluating the needs of each of ABC's sites. The committee charge, as determined by the Board, directs the committee to consider, among other items, the following: current and projected educational program requirements to ensure that our schools are physically equipped to deliver the instructional programs, student safety and welfare, estimated costs associated with meeting the district's facility needs, facility equity, a global assessment of the equity of facilities among district campuses, and funding options to support the needs of facilities. Tonight's agenda item addresses only one item of the many in the 2014 Facilities Needs Assessment: shade coverings, tables, and seating for outdoor eating areas at four of ABC's high schools. Tracy is not even included in this item. The assessment's cost estimate for just the four schools, this is from the 2014 Needs Assessment, named in tonight's agenda item, in $2,000 would be just under $2 million. Shade coverings, tables, and seating will be one of the many items considered by each site and the ad hoc committee as it does its work. As I have noted, doing so was part of the charge to our committee. For the Board to intervene at this time without knowing the school's priorities, although I'm glad to hear from some of the other sites this evening, without seeing input from each site and without knowing what the cost might be would be inappropriate. In fact, it would be usurping exactly the task that you asked the committee to perform. At this time, you have heard from only a small group of parents from one school, which of course I wrote this this afternoon, so I've heard from a few other people. There are many things that are needed at that school and all the other sites. You need to hear from all the schools and from a larger representative body from each site. That is exactly the input that the Facilities Committee will be requesting and hopefully obtaining and which will be included in its presentation to the Board next June. Let us do our job. The committee members are very aware of and focused on what we need to do to assess the needs and wants of each site. Please do nothing more tonight regarding the request of a very small group of parents. To do so without a full evaluation of all sites and further, without even an analysis by district staff of what such a project would cost, would be a dereliction of your fiduciary and fiscal duties to our school district. How can you even take any action before we know the outcome of Prop 55 in next month's election? A year ago, we got almost $28 million from that, about $27 million, and Prop 55 would extend that. But if it doesn't pass, it ends in 2018, and the Board will have to make significant cuts. Can I have 15 more seconds, please? Once again, please take no action on this item. It would be premature and would be done without any information that can be commented by the public. Tonight's agenda item has no information accompanying it. There would be no transparency. In fact, there would be a blank slate, and we all know that slate material is very opaque.
Thank you. Arlene Riddick.
Good evening, everyone. I represent some of your smallest students, working from two-and-a-half, three, and four-year-olds. And like the speaker before me was saying, that other sites that aren't being represented, I'm going to represent them tonight. I'm from Artesia High School Children's Center. I've been at the same site for over 30 years. I'm a teacher, and also, I was a parent. My children graduated from ABC schools, one from Whitney and one from Gar. But today, I want to talk about light bulbs. In my facility, I counted 63 light bulbs out, and the other half are blinking. So it kind of makes me sad to see that we're talking about shade when my children don't even get to see. So I'm asking you to reconsider and think about all of our facilities. Thank you.
Next speaker is Ruben Mancias.
Good evening, President Chen, Superintendent Su, members of the Board, staff. My principal was back there a little while ago, maybe he left. Parents, I am not as eloquent as former Board Member Spitzer, but I too serve on the Facilities Committee, and I echo many of her concerns. I'm proud to serve on the Facilities Committee. We have a specific charge that you have given us and tasked us with, and we are in the process of visiting every single site in this district and meeting with teams, stakeholder teams, and really trying to do a thorough and thoughtful assessment of all the needs in this district. And I am very gratified that so many parents have come. I think it's a wonderful thing to have parents. I support that every student in this district, and I think it's great that parents are here to talk about their needs. I want to help meet those needs as a member of the Facilities Committee. I hope that every single stakeholder can be involved in the site visitation and have their input because that's how we can get the most comprehensive and the most thoughtful picture of what we really need to do. So we have a model in place, we have a mechanism in place, we have a process that we've already set in motion. Let's not short-circuit it. Let's not curtail it now with a rush to vote that doesn't have the full backing and the vetting that the Facilities Committee is designed to do. Again, I think we've heard a lot of very, very thoughtful comments, and we want to talk about and address all those needs. The way to go about that is to use the Facilities Committee model that we have. So please, every parent who's here, every parent who has met you at the mall and wants to be involved, please, let's meet with your Facilities Committee team and talk about what those needs are. And I'm sorry, I forgot to mention, I am Ruben Mancias. I'm a teacher in this district. I teach at Tracy High School, the one high school which is not on the list to receive any additional shade structures. But I'm looking forward to our Tracy team being able to meet with our Facilities Committee and our stakeholders and really talk about what all our needs are. That's how it's designed to work. That's what I ask you to do, is to let the Facilities Committee do its job. And again, I want every single parent, every single parent, to get involved in that process so we can really do the best job we can for our students. Thank you.
Next is Ray Gare.
Hello, Ray Gare. I'm a teacher in ABC. I think that every time that we see more parents getting involved is a wonderful thing. If you recall back to the bond, there were certain parents that were involved, but there wasn't a culture of having community engagement here in ABC. And that's because we've had decades where a school district gets the money, the parents don't get input into how that money's being spent or into the process. And so they haven't been players. There has not been a culture in America where parents and community gets a real say in their schools. And just over the last three years, we have state-mandated collaboration where districts have to engage the parents. It's a culture change. So we're talking about a culture change here, and we've embraced it here in ABC, and it's great to see this trickle of parents that are getting involved. We embrace it so much that our Facilities Committee is twice the size than the regular committee because you want to get twice the involvement of parents. And you've already heard that there's going to be tourists around where parents are going to be able to get involved at the site level to talk about their school site's needs because each site does have individual needs. To me, that's exciting. And the LCAP, I hear every time I go to schools or I've come in here to the board meetings and I'm hearing parents use the term LCAP, and they want to be involved in the LCAP. And when they come here, they're usually told, hey, there's an LCAP process at your school, and they go and get involved. It's not just school site council anymore. That was really the only say that parents had before. Now they have an LCAP process where they can talk about the funds of their school, individual community schools. I think that's huge. And, you know, it may look like this is controversial. It's exciting. It's a change. It's a culture change here, and I think we should look at it like that. I think, you know, we have a Facilities Committee to do a process. Maybe it didn't do the process perfectly before because there wasn't community input at the level that we really needed to engage in any kind of bond talk. If we're going to ever have a bond talk, we need to engage the community fully, and that's what this process is starting to happen. It's exciting here in ABC.
20 seconds.
So I urge you not to take an action tonight, but I know that you'll be listening, and these Facilities Committees will hear individual community members at their schools, and that's what's important. Thank you.
That is all for the comments for this section.
Thank you. We will now go back to Board Member Johnson since this is the items placed on the agenda upon her request. Ms. Johnson.
Thank you, President Chen. And I wish to thank everyone that's come out to speak tonight, as well as speaking at the last couple of board meetings. I've heard the comments that were made tonight regarding new carpet. As far as I know, I thought carpet was taken care of with the modernization that occurred in 1997. There was talk about the Artesia High bathrooms and that the drainage was insufficient. If I recall, I actually brought that up at a board meeting, and as I know it, they have repaired the drainage. So that's been fixed. And then also the talk of light bulbs. So I get, I get there are needs, but those are deferred maintenance needs. Those needs are already in the budget. So if there are issues with that, that's something that our Director of Maintenance Operations needs to look at because those funds are already budgeted. The item here tonight, though, is not about facilities or funding. In 2014, the Board hired an architect that produced a facilities master plan, which identified all the needs of our schools. Those needs were based on input from the principal, the teachers, parents, and the community. On that facility plan, all the high schools indicated that shade and lunch tables were a need. In 2014, the Board approved that safety was a priority for all of our schools. This year, the Board approved the Facilities Ad Hoc Committee to identify the needs of our schools. The facilities ad hoc committee does not provide funding. Currently, what I know of is that Cerritos High and Whitney High has identified that shade and lunch tables are a need. Their principals know it, their parents know it, and their students know it. So it's just not a need, it's a safety issue. We need to protect our students from the possibility of developing skin cancer in the future and to prevent them from transferring bacteria as they sit on the ground from their hands to their food. At our board meetings, I've listened to the comments made by other board members, and I respect their opinions. However, I'm also listening to the voices of the community. Yes, some parent groups are much more organized and have come out to speak publicly on this issue. So they've already, they're making a statement that they do need the shades. So as a Board, we also need to do our homework. We cannot make an informed decision unless we know the fiscal impact and source of funding. So if I were to make the motion tonight, I'm not asking that you vote against it simply because you don't know how much it costs. It was mentioned that shade costs $2 million by one of our speakers. I actually have information that was given to the Board where it's not even near that. To do all four high schools would cost less than half a million dollars. So certainly, there are discrepancies and figures that are being thrown out there, and that's what staff needs to do and go back and look exactly what we're looking at. So simply to say it costs too much, that's not doing your due diligence. So the Facilities Committee identifies needs, and that's all they do, or not all they do. But then they also, it's also been stated that Whitney and Cerritos High School need it, and why should they wait a year when there's funding available? In our budget presentation back in May, we have money, $4.4 million, that can be spent at the Board's discretion. So it doesn't make sense to wait out a year if we already have that money. So with that said, I'd like to withdraw my original motion to provide shade at and lunch tables at Artesia, Cerritos, Gar, and Whitney, and instead, would like to move forward on approving shade for Cerritos High and Whitney High as it seems that the other high schools are not engaged at this time. They may be later, but if Whitney and Cerritos are asking for it now and the other high schools are not asking for it, then that maybe, then that's not a priority for them. But I do know that Cerritos and Whitney are asking for it now. There's money for it now. There certainly is money for the other schools as well, but they've not identified that as a need at this time. So I'd like to also ask that staff provide background information as far as fiscal impact and source of funding. After we receive that information, and then at the time, the Board could actually go out for a bid process so we can get more figures. So right now, I'd like to make a new motion to place this item on the October 18th meeting agenda for the Board to take action to approve shade and lunch tables. Let me go back first, just to remind the Board that to vote again tonight is not saying you're approving shade, it's just to go back and get fiscal, to get information on fiscal impact and source of funding. So that's what my motion is tonight, is for the Board to move forward to the October 18th meeting to approve shade and lunch tables for Cerritos High and Whitney High and for staff to provide information on the fiscal impact and the source of funding. That's my motion. If I could have a second. You can have discussion after the second. So to second doesn't mean that you're approving it, you're just seconding to move forward on a discussion. So you can have, you can make a second, and then we can discuss.
By seconding, Ms. Johnson already proposed a motion to place the item of providing shades and lunch tables for Cerritos High School and Whitney High School only, which is different from the agendas item before us right now. So if anyone seconds that, which means we will agendize the item, which is providing for Cerritos High School and Whitney High School lunch, shades, and tables for the next meeting, which is on October the...
18th.
18th.
Okay, then I'd like to withdraw my motion and make a new motion.
Ms. Johnson, can you repeat that again?
I would like to withdraw my motion and reword my motion, restate my motion.
Okay, yeah, probably better that you state your motion.
Okay. My motion then is to place on the October 18th meeting agenda for the Board to discuss in further detail shade and lunch tables and for staff to provide the fiscal impact and source of funding.
Okay, it's being moved and seconded. So that will be placed on, I just want to clarify that, clarify that. Ms. Johnson, so your motion is to have the Board discuss at the next board meeting on October 18th, to be placed on the agenda so that a Board can discuss.
Yes, it's for the 18th of October to discuss when we receive more, so that we can discuss along with information given to us with regards to fiscal impact and source of funding. I think we could have together as a Board a more thorough discussion if we had more information before us.
Okay, we'll go ahead and listen to Board's comments and questions, and then we'll take a vote.
Thank you.
Ms. Yu.
Okay, I have a question for Tuan. I'm asking all these difficult questions to Tuan tonight. Where would the source of funding come from to support the schools, shades and so forth that was mentioned that we're discussing?
Should the Board act on this? The source of funding can come from the one-time money that we have in the budget, that $4.4 million that the Board have not acted upon because the Board have, in the past, decided to wait until after the November election to act on that money. But like I have reported in the past, the Board can at any time have a discussion on how to use that money. The Board can also use your fund balance to provide additional funding to support this action item, should you vote for it.
So the November election was mentioned. What is the, what, can you explain about Prop 55 and what is, why is it important to discuss this after the November election? Or Dr. Su, can you answer? Can you explain?
Yes. Prop 55 is an extension of Prop 30, so let's go back on that. So Prop 35 is under November ballot. Should the voters approve that 55, then they would extend Proposition 30. And what Proposition 30, what it does is that it provides fundings for school districts, all school districts in the state of California. all school district in the state of California. Annually, Prop 30 currently provides about $7 to $8 billion to school district in the state of California. ABC alone last year received about $27 million under Prop 30. So as you can see, and, but Prop 30 also, just to make a point, is set to sunset, expires in 2018, and that's the reason for Prop 55 because that were to extend it for another 12 years to the year 2030. So if that were not to be extended, then by 2018, the state of California will not have that additional revenues, which is about $8 billion, that it would have to make up for that, for that shortfall. So for ABC, potentially, that the shortfall will be $27 million. And I'm not saying that that will be the cut to the district. The state would have to come up with that money to support school district under the low control funding formula, which is Prop 98 and another set of rules that provide that. But to answer your question directly, Prop 55 will provide, will extend Prop 30, which is providing fundings to school district at this point.
So should Prop 55 don't pass, how would it affect our district?
If Prop 55 doesn't pass, it will affect all school district because it will not expand, extend Prop 30, which means that Prop 30 will end in 2018. So beginning with the fiscal year 2018-19, because the state will get less revenues, in turn, they would make, have some adjustment to the budget, it could potentially reduce funding for school district. And I want to emphasize the word potentially. It would likely, but potentially, depends on the action of the state. They responsible for providing us with, with funding. If they get less, then it's likely that we will get less. So that's, that's how it works.
So then, how would our district be able to manage if we don't have that funding?
We have a couple of years because we know that Prop 30 doesn't expire in 2018. So we have a couple of years to plan ahead and make adjustments. One of the things you can do is to save up for the rainy days by, by not spending the additional one-time funding that you have and instead put it in your fund balance, on your saving account, your reserve for the rainy day. So that's one thing. The second thing is, you know, we, when we plan ahead and when we make, and the Board make any decisions that would impact the district financially long-term, you need to take into consideration of the potential, you know, expiration of Prop 30 and potential reductions in state funding in the year 1819. So that's why the November election is important because you will know by then whether the voters will vote for Prop 55 or not, then you know what kind of plannings you have to do to prepare for 1819, should the reductions in state funding come down.
So you're saying that the Board is the one who decides how to use the one-time funding of 4.4 million?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
Definitely.
Then, when is the, the time limit that we can decide how to use it?
There's no time limit, you can decide how to use it anytime you want. Right now, it's just in the reserve for you. It's sent there. So you can talk about it on the 18th, you can talk about it in November, December, anytime you want during this fiscal year. Anytime you would like to spend that money, you should have a discussions on how you want to spend that money and spend it or save it. It's entirely up to the Board.
So say the, the Prop 55 passed, and we have the extension, then after the November election, the Board, we decide that we want to give our schools, high schools, which have this urgent needs that, you know, a lot of the, the parents brought the concern to us. We could say we can, we want to distribute, allocate 1.5 million to the high schools, not just for shades and tables, but equitably across the district, including Tracy High School, all five high schools, according to the heads. And is that something that if we, the, the Board members decide and agree, then that could happen?
Definitely. So let me repeat what I'm hearing, what you are saying. It's not about shades or benches anymore. Should, after the November election, and that Prop 55 get extended, or Prop 30 get extended, rather, and if Prop 55 passes, then should the Board take action to allocate one-time money to the high schools? Yes, on a per-student basis, to, for the high school to use however they see fit. Yes, you may do so. Yes, definitely, you can do that. Yes.
And just lastly, do you think you can provide us of the statistics of the number of high schools per each students in each high school? And how much, say, we allocate 1.5 million, how much each high schools will receive?
Yes, so if you were to hypothetically, to answer your question, if the Board were to approve this in the future time, if you allocate 1.5 million to the high schools, we are currently, we have 6,614 students in the high school. So roughly about 1,400 at Artesia High School, 2,183 at Cerritos High School, 2,029 students at GARR, 680 at Whitney, this is just the high school students, and about 300 students at Tracy. So they will get about roughly 200, a little bit more than $200 per student. So you can do the math. So Artesia will get about 321,000. Cerritos will be about 495,000, and Whitney will be about 154,000. So basically, you just take the total amount that you want to allocate, you divide it by the number of high school students, you get the per-student allocation, and then you just multiply out by the number of students per, per school. So that is roughly about a little bit more than $200 per high school student.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm sorry for taking such a long time.
Thank you, President. As a Board, I think we all need to do our homework. I did my survey. First, I want to thank you, Dr. Kelham, right? And also, Anata. It was really great talking to you. Kelham called me, I really appreciate, we discussed about it, and we did talk about Facility Ad Hoc. And Mr. Anata also agreed with that, you know, Facility Ad Hoc, which he didn't know that before. And the next board meeting will be on October 13th, and you asked me the date, I'm going to give it to you right now. The homework I did, I went back to check what happened, how this brought to, to today, this agenda. I think that's important, the background. Back in June, July, the PTSA and Whitney High School had some leftover run over the budget from foundation. They, the PTSA decided to donate the money to Whitney High School for chair and table. And fortunately, right at that time, the principal was there. I think principal oversee foundation, you have assistant principal, Ms. Chee oversee the, the PTSA. They go to meeting with them, they check with them and, and listen to the report. The result came back was, the principal stood out, say, this was item was discussed with the Tuan already, is, and they are working on that. So how did they come to the Board today? I don't know. Actually, you, all parent have a right to come to the Board, present your needs, and your wish, and you, the, the, I understand that, that shade is needed. Okay, I checked it, I checked the teacher, I checked with the, the parents, I checked with the student, too. I called the student, I called a bunch of them. I don't just call one student, I call ASB people, represent for student. I talked to individual students, 7th and 8th grade, I spoke to them. And I asked them, because my kids graduate from there. I say, how do you handle, it is hard. I went to the site, I visited the site. It is hard, especially worse than Whitney High School. It is a need, there's no doubt about it, it is a need. But I asked them, how do they tolerate it right now? Because the same is what my kids was there. And I remember when I delivered lunch to the, to my kids, they were sitting there on the ground, they were eating with other friends, talking. So I asked the kids, where do you stay there? Some of them said, teacher's very nice, then I'm staying in the classroom and eat. Some of them, the building that we just built, and they stay in the corner there because the high building, the multipurpose room was shade there, so covered them. So this, so right now, there is a need, absolutely need. And I talked to every single person there's need. But however, just like I mentioned the last time on the board meeting, I mentioned this is a pie here. And I think Jeff's right here, the Lakewood Council member right here. When it happened to you, when people come to you, bring, you always ask them, have you discussed your principal? Have you, I mean, you don't discuss with principal, you will say, have you go to the, you have your committee member, they go there and present it, they go to C D staff first. But it is urging needs. I never denial that. But the issue is, where do we go to get the, the funded, to get fixed issue? That's another issue there. Facility Ad Hoc just added in recently, you know. Tuan, I have a question to ask you. When do you folks go into the, each school now? I, I think what the project is due to next month, the, all the committee members go to school to talk to the, the teacher, talk to student, talk to parent regarding the needs. Is that, am I correct or wrong? The next meeting?
The, the Facility Ad Hoc Committee have asked each school to set up their own site committee. So before the subcommittee or the Facility Ad Hoc Committee has a chance to go out to each school, they have asked each school to form their own site facility committee. And that would involve the principal, parents, students, community members, staff, to have a meeting to identify the needs of each of their school. And then in November, around November and December, is when the Facility Ad Hoc Committee members will go out and meet with the site facility team. So that is the plan. So the school needs some time to form the team to evaluate their needs, talk among themselves. So when the Facility Ad Hoc Committee go out and meet with them, they would have a comprehensive or thorough report already from the site committee.
My next question, I know we have a Whitney principal, new principal here, right? I, if recall by some of the PTSA member told me that on September, you were there, right? September meeting they have. And one of your PTSA, the, either president or chair, or one of the member, had discussed with you, they, there was tension brought back to me was, you were discussed with the Tuan, it was discussing already, either by you or previous superintendent. Am I correct? I mean, principal, am I correct? Can you come to the podium, please? I did my homework, I went to check everyone. So I want to make sure this is processed down fair for our parents here. I want, board member, allow me to, a couple of questions, I need to clarify that. Would that brought attention to you through the PTSA?
Was what brought to my attention?
Attention, the donation, you know, they have run over the budget from the PTSA. And either before you, the principal was telling them, they already discussed with Tuan already about this shade issue, shade and chair.
My understanding is that they were talking previously about tables as well as shade, but because we're working on the student union right now.
The student union, that budget ended up, originally, the money supposed to go to the shade and chair, ended up to go to the student unit for reformation or something.
Yes.
Am I right?
Correct.
Okay, so I just want to let the parents here to know, Whitney High School parent. This is what I find out. The result was, yes, there was, this is issue, they are concerned, they want to do it. And they want to go back and discuss with Tuan. This is what things are already. And this principal, because the PTSA has a budget, they are ready there. Because every year, they have so much amount of money into the, into the account. When it's over the count, they need to spend the money, so they decided to put money for the chair. And then the PTSA, they discussed with principal, principal said, well, assistant principal, Ms. Chee, stated, okay, then will you send money for a student union? Right now, the kids do go what we have right now. They'll go to the, the teacher's room, teachers let them use office, some of them even. And they use the master room for the break time eating area. So right now, I know, I'm asking you is, I know the health, I, well, I'm nurse. I know the needs, I know the safety issue, too. But I, my point here is that this into, in our project already here, not the project, I'm saying it's discussing and ready to work on that with the parent, with the school. Then, I don't know why it brought it back in here for discussion when we have a principal, a principal right here and aware of this. So that budget, it ended up, say, temporary, don't go to the chair, go to the student union, am I right?
If I may. What I believe happened was Mrs. Sue knew that we were already discussing with Tuan the issue of shade and tables and several other things. And because we were working with Tuan, we talked about the possibility of using it in the meantime for the student union.
So I know, so, do we allow Ms. Emma? No, no, okay. You can come back and second public comment. This is, this is the protocol in here. Sorry, Ms. Emma. So it was brought to your attention, and you're aware that, and PTSA also as umbrella all other parents leader. So I don't know why we bring you here today to discuss on that. It's in, is, the way I'm looking at Ms. Anata and Ms. Kelham, we have her staff, I have a staff here. My staff, first one, the chain command, is superintendent. I'm saying my, I don't speak of other board member. Then my next channel is, she's oversee the principal. Principal work with this school, and I know we have monthly principal meeting with you. And I also know Whitney High School a tea, tea parent, tea principal time, right? Which is next week, next, next week, right?
Yes.
And that's the time all the parent will be meeting with you and discuss, we'll have a tea with you and discuss the needs of the school. So then, I'm asking the board member reconsider this proposed agenda today, even for the next time. We should give a principal, this new principal, come from well-known school, and we have the trust of principal to take care of this. We hire superintendent, superintendent hire principal. I believe, let the staff do their work and come back and to us, what is the solution? How do you, how fast you can get it done? And I spoke to students, say, do you want to right now to get the shade done? She said, they say, we wish, but right now, we okay, but please, but put us first priority. And I would like to ask you, as a board member, please put that in the first priority. My kids suffer one enough already before, and please help us in this one, to make the dream become true.
If I may. The issues that were brought before the Board several weeks ago were actually issues that I had brought to the Whitney Foundation meeting and explained to them that they were, they were items that I had identified and wanted to work with the district office to resolve. So these were things we were already in process in working with Tuan and others at the district office to make sure that our students' needs were met. Frankly, the, the fact that it bypassed my plate, so to speak, and came to you was a bit of a surprise to me. Tuan came out and he did a walkthrough with us. This is something that was scheduled before anybody else came to the board meeting, and he was very helpful, and we're actually excited that we're going to start moving on some of the things we need.
I appreciate you come forward, you're right. One other person I did talk to is Ms. Sue, and she's the chair of the PTSA. And I also talked to other board member, too. And they really appreciate our Board. And I want to thank you, Dr. Sue, you go out, speak so highly, our board member here. One other person, Ms. Sue, the PTSA president, she told me, she said, Dr. Sue has go around the school district and has been instructed, all the staff and the parent leader, our Board work together, I think our Board does work together, and we were, I mean, I will support you, but I really want this, I mean, this process speed up a little bit. And, I mean, right now, I believe it should go to the, I mean, I really urge defer this to Facility Ad Hoc. Work with the people, and I'm looking for the next, one of the item we're going to approve, which is right on the Board Committee, all parents, actually, it's on page 103, I believe that, right? At no charge, committee may actively seeking input and participation by parent, guardian, staff, and community. That's one of the best thing we have in our district, is we welcome people, go to the Ad Hoc facility and stress your need, work with the, the community member, work with the staff, and work with your principal, and provide the best services for the student, your student and our student. That's why I'm asking my colleague here, please defer that to Facility Ad Hoc. And I thank you so much, and I am sorry to put you on the stand. I didn't know you were sitting there, so I wore my glasses, say, oh, that's Mr. Burgley. Right? Burgole.
I hope I've been of some help, thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Thank you for giving us background on your school.
Ms. Johnson?
So we've had our principal from Whitney High saying that he has already kind of started the process with Tuan because that's been, the shades and tables have been a need that's been identified way long before parents started coming before the Board. And the reason why they came before the Board is because they did follow procedure, they've identified it at their school site, they let their principal know, they've gone through the chain of command, and the Board is ultimately the last person that they have to appeal to. So to kick this back to a Facility Committee, when the principal's already working, working with Mr. Nguyen, it doesn't make sense because the project has been identified. What they're asking is for the resources to make this, you know, come to life. You know, so tonight's motion really is for us to have further discussion. Let us find out first what it's going to cost. Like I said, many numbers have been thrown out there from $2 million to $12 billion. And you can't make an informed decision if you don't have the background information. You don't even know what it costs, you don't know what we're looking at. So that, that's all that is, is for us to do our due diligence. You don't even know what it costs. You don't know what we're looking at. So that, that's all that is, is for us to do our due diligence to make sure we are making informed decisions. Uh, let me ask Tuan, um, should Prop 55 fail? Pro- and if it does, if it does, um, you're saying it won't take place for another couple of years. Does that then affect on, does that then affect, effect or affect ongoing services?
It may. So let me answer the question again. Prop 30 provide the additional funding through the year 2018. So if Prop 55 doesn't passes, which mean that Prop 30 will end, no extension, then beginning in the fiscal year 2018, 19, the state will not get the $8 billion that they're getting from Prop 30 right now, which mean they have to make some adjustments. They may make a cut to other programs. They may make a cut to education. To remind the board that education made up about 40% plus of the state budget. So if now all of a sudden, I'm gonna, gonna use the pie example, but if the pie is a little bit smaller, short eight billion, they have to make some adjustment. We don't know what the governor and the state gonna do in, in 2018, 19. All I can report out is that if Prop 55 does not pass and if Prop 30 doesn't get extended, the state will get $8 billion less. And right now, ABC is receiving $27 million from Prop 30. So I can just report out the numbers. What the state will do in 2018, 19, I do not have that answer. But it's likely that they would have to make some adjustments because they get $8 billion in less, in, in less revenue. So they would have to make some adjustments. Whether the adjustments come from the Prop 98 or the education side, which is 40% of the pie or the other side of the programs, we don't know. It will likely both. There will be some adjustments. To what extent, I don't have the answer.
Okay. So then, am I right by saying that the 4.4 million in one-time funding that we have now cannot be used for ongoing expenses?
That is correct. Whether Prop 55 passes or not, the 4.4 million is one-time money. And it should only, my recommendation is that as the CFO, you use one-time money for one-time expenditures. You should never, never use it for ongoing expenditures. So Prop 55 passes or not, that you have the 4.4 million now in the current year. Just given to the district by the state already.
So then it would be appropriate then to use a portion of the 4.4 million for shades and tables then? If, if you identify that as a source of funding, it would be appropriate then?
Again, the board can spend the 4.4 million dollars in however they wishes, including shades and benches. But that's unrestricted.
Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Law?
Thank you, Madam President. I think we're losing track of what we're trying to do here. Uh, we have a facilities ad hoc committee that is looking at every school, every school, every site and what they need. Now we're talking about, we're going to put sun shade, whatever those things are, and benches at two schools. What about the other 28 schools? They want something too. It's just not, it's not an issue that we should be talking about. I think we all agree, we need sun shade. Every school wants something. But we have a mechanism to do that. We have a mechanism for, it is in place right now and is operating right now to look at all the schools and what their needs are. And if, if I was at a school, and I know several who would say, there's a school that has, um, no place to have their assemblies. They're outside in the sun. They'd like to have a sun shade. They'd like to have a building. Now, what is that, make that any more priority than having a priority of having a sun shade benches at Whitney High School? I just, I just don't get it. I don't think that's right. I think we have a way to do this. We have a way to look at it. And we're starting to do that, and I think we should continue to do that. If we don't do that, everybody, every school can come in here and say, I want a piece of the pie. Your pie. And we don't have a very big pie. We have like a little piece of mincemeat. It's just a little tiny piece of pie. And as Juan said, I think, I think it would be prudent for us to wait. It's only 50 days or whatever it is until the election and we'll know whether we have Proposition 30 slash 55 is continuing. And then we can make some, some new decisions. Right now, we have $4 million to spend and we're going to spend it on two schools. I, I just, I, I cannot vote for that. Thank you.
Mr. Apodaca?
Thank you, Madam President. And I'm, I'm glad that we had the opportunity to have such a robust discussion tonight. I want to go over what, basically what I'm hearing and just the nuts and bolts of it. Basically, as it is right now, Madam President, we don't have a comprehensive recommendation from the facilities committee. Not for five schools, not for two schools. There is no recommendation from the facilities committee that was created to adequately represent the entire district. I understand there's a cost to it. Facilities isn't concerned with cost. Finance committee is concerned with cost. Facilities, you guys cook it up. Finance will find a way to serve it. For me, this isn't about the shades. This isn't about the cost. Right now, it's about equity. It's about equal representation for the entire district. I am glad that our parents are engaged. You got the conversation going. Part of that conversation, give and take, we learn about what your needs are and what you're looking for in our district. And we're going to tell you how to address those needs. The right way to address a need at the facility, at a facility is to go through the facilities committee. That's the right process and the right channel. I don't, I don't see, I don't see anything from the facilities committee. Not only that, but we had the management association here, which they did a lot of thanking. And I'm grateful that they came and they showed up. Having so many principals in a room makes me a little nervous, but they use the term, which I haven't heard before, and I, I hope they don't coin it, but they probably will, site-based management. We're trusting principals to communicate with their teachers and say, hey, you know what? I need this, I need that. This is falling down, this is broken. Heaven forbid that a board member visit your school site and see that you need something, because of course we'll bring it up. But there's a chain of command. And you, you can't, you can't violate that unless there's something that really, really is wrong. And we've heard from principals, we've heard from teachers, we've heard from other parents, basically saying, hey, you know what? I'd rather have computers for my classroom. I'd rather have these, these fans at Artesia that are barely cutting it because the gym is too hot. And it's about the process. This specific need that we have, there's a process to it. And we're circumventing the entire thing. I'm glad that Mr. Brickley was, you know, good enough to listen and, and go ahead and start working with the district on it. However, that was already in process and now it's come to a screeching halt. Because if this comes to us again, it's not going to come to us as a recommendation from the facilities committee. It'll come to us as, oh, great, here we go with the shades again. You know, so we're tainting the process. We need to trust the system. That's what we were elected to do. That's what our staff here gets paid to do. They're my staff too, Sophia. So, and also to, to close, Prop 55 is a big deal. We go into deficit spending, we start cutting into our reserves. Trust me, you will rue the day that you got those shades installed when you find out that there's more budget cuts coming down the way. I don't think the resale value is too good on those, from what I understand, as far as the life on those, if we had, if we had to do it. So keep coming to the board meetings, keep talking to your principals, go to the facilities meetings. Talk to the people that are there to represent you. The people that are sitting up here that you elected to represent you, appoint those people. If you want to be on one of those committees, let them know. Or at the very least, show up to, they're open to the public. Show up and say, hey, I have an issue with this. And keep showing up. I, I still haven't heard from any of my constituents, from Hawaiian Gardens. They're not here. And in fact, we're talking about, you have high school and you also have a middle school. Correct, you do at Whitney. But we still have other high schools and other middle schools and other, other elementary schools. And I'll tell you right now, the parents that I've spoken to in my, in my trustee area, when I mentioned, well, they need shade. It wasn't even laughable. They said, really? Because I've got a list of 12 other things that you can do to help my kid be more comfortable at school and be in a better learning environment. I actually had a parent say, I have a list for a better learning environment. I'm sorry. Again, it comes down to equity. And if, for those folks that say, well, that's not true, well, you know, continue to bring your case forward to the board. But I was elected to speak for not just the trustee area, but for those that aren't here tonight. We have 30 parents in a group showing up out of how many tens of thousands in the entire district. So that said, I would encourage my colleagues to vote against this, to perform the due diligence, see what happens with Prop 55. Do the right thing. We do have a fiduciary duty, which is a financial, legally binding financial obligation to this district, to the students, to the stakeholders, to the taxpayers, to anybody who says, I went through an ABC USD school. And that's a very serious duty. Again, it's a legally binding financial duty that we have to be prudent with taxpayer funds. This is not a prudent use. In fact, it's a haphazard use of funds. Because we went from five schools to two schools to, well, we don't know what it's gonna cost. It's an agenda item at a board meeting. That's a big deal. If we pass it, it's policy. It's gonna happen. We did not perform our due diligence. We did not fulfill our fiduciary duty. If it comes back, okay, we'll take a look at it. But as of right now, I just know that we need shade. Give me more information than that. Thank you.
Ms. Yu?
Thank you. Our board members are very fired up tonight. Appreciate the, the real exciting discussion and engagement. Tuan, back to you again. Now, say the, the needs of the shades go to the facility, uh, ad hoc committee, how long will it take before that happens?
So the board, um, give the charge to facility ad hoc committee, and I think I've reported out before. In October, so hopefully by the next meeting, they will give you the first update and their progress. The second update will be in January of 2017. And the final report due to the board is June 2017. And that will provide hopefully to the board a comprehensive needs of all the facility needs in all the schools and the priorities by each school, because that's what we've asked them to do too. If you identify 100 items, 50 items, 20 items, you need to prioritize it.
So, uh, no action can be taken regarding the, the shades, for example, until June 2017?
That's not what I'm saying. I'm saying that the, the ad hoc committee will provide the report to the board. The board give them the charge and the board give them a deadline of June 2017. That's when you get a comprehensive report from them. So that's when you would have the big, the full picture of all the needs of every schools and their priorities. So that's, that's, that's what I'm saying.
Okay. Because going through the ad hoc, you know, facilities committee is probably the, the proper thing to do. But also at the same time, uh, by the time it goes to the facility committee and all the meetings and the dates, uh, some of these children of the parents who are here, they're gone. So it, it is kind of disheartening for some of the parents who are involved, uh, to just have the burden on the parents to raise so much money to provide for the school. So I think that we need to also, uh, consider as a board to hear out the needs of the schools. And yeah, of course, the principals, they know best because they really interact and engage with the parents. I mean, engage with the teachers and the needs. But at the same time, uh, I do have to give credit to the parents. And I, I myself, you know, have two kids still in the district. Parents are pretty sensitive to the needs of the students. And I think that I would want to, I want to encourage our board to really, um, be open-minded and hear out what the parents have to say and be mindful of that too. And not just, uh, you know, disregard it, but to really, I know that everybody really appreciated the parents coming out and, um, expressing the needs and so forth. But yeah, that's what I wanted to, you know, share.
Ms. Johnson?
Um, just to be clear, my motion doesn't have, identify a specific school site. It doesn't even say to approve shades. And this is not the opportunity for other schools to submit a wish list. Um, if Prop 55 should fail, that still gives us another couple of years to, to address a possible reduction in revenue. But you know, when Prop 50, when Prop 30 was voted, we knew it was temporary. We had all these years to figure out how we were going to deal with it if it was going to sunset. So, you know, all of a sudden, it's become a topic because we know it's going to be expiring pretty soon. You know, it's something we could have done last year. We had 10.8 million in one-time funding last year. We could have addressed Prop 30 then. So if we defer this item to the facilities committee, all they're gonna do is say, hey, facilities committee, this is what we need. Facilities committee is gonna check it off their list and say, okay, I'll let the board know. It's gonna come right back to us. We have the money now. I don't know what the, why I don't see the need to wait. So again, I'm just urging my colleagues, let us see first what the source of funding and what the fiscal impact, what this is going to cost before we make any decision about approving shades. That's, that's all I'm asking is that I think it needs further discussion because we don't have the right information before us. So, thank you.
Ms. Sid?
You know, I heard my two colleague next to me is mention about the needs for all school. Again, they agree what I say, the pie that I mentioned last time. It is true though. When I have a one kid come to me, mommy, I want a candy. So I give the candy to the child. I have three kids. But I only have two candy on my hand. And my other child come to me, have another candy safe. So then the last one comes, I want a candy. I have no more candy. So board member, as myself, need to oversee the entire budget and have to be managed well. You know, indeed, I have to agree, the parents in here, Winnie High School is the one of the high school, I went to site visit, I did personally. I realize there aren't, they need, there's a need there. But, but cannot speak of all school needs. We will have to look at entire budget, how we're gonna distribute out evenly. How much we can give it to that certain school. And like board member Sue just mentioned, we, we do need to hear the parents' concern. We do need the support. You are the one voting here. You're the one elect me to be sitting here representing for all. When we say represent all, not just only parent, the student, the staff, do they work with us? And we work with the parents. And we make sure we, we make the best product in our district, which is your children and our children. But the issues here is that, that's one, one thing about, about distribute the pie evenly. The second agenda is, there's no agenda here, actually. There was discussed already in the school and the principal already take the lead and PTSA is involved that too. So we, I don't know why we still need to go on and on and on for this one. All I'm asking is when I go to the facility ad hoc there and when I bring it back to us, we all gonna eye on that. And we, November's coming, maybe that, that one may not affect us that much because there's one time fund spending there. But I want a parent to understand that you make your best choice. Is this the best one you have? Just like la- last time I mentioned, you have this much for your school. This is what you want. And I talked to student, I talked to parent, I talked to student, the different needs they have. I even had people say, who told them to come to talk to you guys? That's not what we want. I do have people tell me that. And I can give you number after board meeting. But there's a need. As a parent, Mr. Sue just mentioned about it. We care about kids. We watch our kids. 100 degree outside is horrible, hurt our feeling. We've, I felt that too. I felt for you. Because I was once, kids was school. So I won't end up here, still prefer to defer to the facility ad hoc and work together and find the piece of pie. This is what you want. And work from there.
Ms. Law?
Thank you, Madam President. Um, before I, before we vote, I would like to hear what the motion was. If, I don't know.
The motion before?
Several motions and I want to make sure which one we're voting on here.
Okay. Laura, would you please read it?
Board member Johnson's motion is to place on the October 18th board agenda for the board to discuss in further detail shade and lunch tables and for staff to provide the fiscal impact and the source of funding.
Wait, I thought I heard only limited to two schools.
Her second motion was this, without the two schools.
And which other two schools?
There are no two schools mentioned in this, uh, second motion.
Okay. Ms. Johnson, let me ask you this clarifying, quick, clarifying question. Your second motion, not the first one, your second motion for the board to discuss on October 18th, the shade and, uh, lunch tables, umbrella seating. Okay. For all the high schools or just two high schools? Because I heard it's for Cerritos High School and Whitney High School.
President Chen, I did not identify any schools. I'm asking for staff to bring back information so that we can have a better discussion about it. So I did not identify any schools at this time.
Thank you for clarification. So your motion is to have staff provide fiscal report? So, your motion is to have staff provide fiscal report?
Fiscal impact and source of funding, yes.
Fiscal impact and source of funding. Okay. Okay, I also have some concerns and comments. We have a number of principals this evening attending this meeting. And I have heard from the principals, very different needs and priorities. For instance, Sarito, Artesia High School, you're talking about, Mrs. Sergio, you're talking about the need for technology. Okay. And each high school may have different needs. So, what I'm trying to explain here is, we hold the principals accountable. Site-based management. Okay. The principals work with parents, with students, with the, with the own school community. If the board says, I think your school needs this, needs that, that's top-down. That's going the wrong way. Site-based management. We need to respect our principals who actually run the schools day in, day out. They know the needs of the schools better than the board. The process is supposed to be for the schools to bring their needs to the board. The board will decide. But as of now, I don't think that's the case. It looks like the board is doing this top-down, saying, I want you to have this. Well, they may not want that. They may have other needs. There were a few things mentioned tonight. Maybe library, maybe technology, maybe 40-year carpet needs to be replaced. So, yes, I think it's important that we follow the process in any organizations. If everyone follows the process, the organization will perform well. If we don't, then it will create chaos. It will not be a problem solving, it's creating problems. So, it's very critical we follow the due process. Second point is, Ms. Law already touched base on that and so did Ms. Sei and other board members. There is a facility ad hoc committee who is doing the exact work right now. Well, other community members already mentioned that too. They are inspecting the schools, listening to the school community, what is the need? Prioritize need and other needs of your schools. The ad hoc committee meetings are open to the public. Some parents already left. I would really encourage you to attend these meetings. Mr. Nguyen, do you happen to know when the next meeting is gonna be?
It is the second Thursday for the facility ad hoc committee, so I wanna say October 12, 13.
Thank you. It's open to the public?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And you also had mentioned earlier that the committee is in the process of scheduling tours of the schools to learn the needs of the schools. Is that also in the process?
Yes, ma'am. The committee decided that they will visit each and every school to discuss with the school about the needs of, of each and every schools and the priority. So, they have scheduled that and they will likely to go out, hopefully beginning in November. Because they have asked each school before they go out to visit the school to identify, to work with, within their school, within their staff, within the community members, with the parents, with the students, to come up with their needs. So, they can present it to the, to the facility ad hoc committee.
Thank you. So, there are different priorities, different needs from each school. And the ad hoc committee on facilities is the mechanism that's doing the right work. If we, the board, charge, gives a charge of a committee to do certain work and we said, forget it. You know, we are gonna do it, we're gonna decide, we don't need you. That's wrong. So, we need to follow the process. And also on the fiscal impact, right now, there are too many uncertainties. There are too many unknowns. Well, election coming up November 8th. We will have much more clear picture, what type of funding, what kind of revenues the district will receive. There's no need to jump ahead. It's really premature. I think it's much better, makes better sense to wait until after the November election. And also, the district might have more urgent needs after the election in November. The funded balance, the reserves. In case Prop 55 fails, we might need to have every dollar we have to satisfy our needs. So, I don't think it's, it's the right process to make a decision before we even know what kind of money we have, what other priorities we have, what other needs we have, and how much money we have. It's like you wanna spend money and you don't know what you're buying because I don't know the price tag. I don't know, oh, maybe today I wanna buy a house, maybe tomorrow I wanna buy a refrigerator. That's wait till after November. Those are my comments. Okay, I think we're ready to take a vote. The motion before us is to place on the agenda for October 18th meeting, for staff to provide fiscal impact and source of funding. For, Ms. Johnson, for what?
To discuss the shade and tables.
Oh, so it's, okay. For staff to provide fiscal impact and source of funding for shades and tables. Okay, we're ready to vote. Roll call, please.
Mr. Apadaka?
No.
Mrs. Chen?
No.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Law?
No.
Mrs. Mendoza?
No.
Mrs. Sei?
No.
Mrs. Yu?
Yes.
Okay. It's 5-2. Would you please report the yes note and the no vote?
Mr. Apadaka, no. Mrs. Chen, no. Ms. Johnson, yes. Mr. Law, no. Mrs. Mendoza, no. Mrs. Sei, no. Mrs. Yu, yes.
Motion failed.